Starting on me earlier, I'm so glad I looked at the agenda. We're having, we're gonna get started with our warrant assessors meeting that time of year for us to set our tax commitment for FY22, '23. I know that Tim and Jen have put together some scenarios, I guess, I would say, right? So, do you have more progress through what we've got?
Yeah, so I'm here for the evening, live stream, I'm in the council. So, I want to first thank Werner, who's the assessor account. Werner's been working on this since, since March, right, it's going to do our opposite. Give me another value, I want, I want some. And she's worked on it right up until today, making changes. So she's done a presentation which will help, I think. Jeff and Jen kind of want to stand a little bit better detail what this is, some big good refreshers for the rest of the board, the 10 slides to do. So I'd have first, I'll let Werner to start with that, to kind of explain what we're doing here. How we, how we set the rates and how we use it. Then I have a stretching challenge, roll the numbers, and propose low rates and standards of the ensuing attack. Werner?
Okay, so I'll need to share my screen. It's something you say both, so I'll just wait, let me know when I want to share.
Share with you.
I was just able to just screen sharing. All right, so as Tim said, I just put together a few slides to audience. Okay, just a few slides to kind of go over some basics, tax rates and values, how the numbers relate to each other. And I find it helpful too, because you're inevitably have to answer questions with tax payers, right? So it's, it's sometimes nice to have, you know, that understanding, refresh maybe on a few things. So I will keep it with. So I want to tell you about the certified ratio. Ratios are really important in the assessing world because that is our, our most important measure of how well we're doing. We talk about assessments and value. So basically, a ratio is the assessed value divided by the same price, okay? So if you're right on target, you're gonna get a ratio of one or 100%. The state requires towns to be above 70, right, and no higher than 110. However, your certified ratio is a ratio that the state uses for your reimbursement, right? So if you have a ratio that's too low, you're not going to be able to give your full home state exemption, your full veterans exemption, and you won't get your full reimbursement allowance either. So as long as we have a certified ratio of 100 or more, then we can give our taxpayers their full amounts of their home state exemptions and stuff like that. So when, every year, part of my job is to report all of the sales and sales ratios to the state. And I have an idea of what my median ratio is out of that ratio study. But they will tell us what our developed parcel ratio is, and last year it was 88%. So that falls lower than 91. You have to have at least a 91 to have a certified ratio of 100, of 100. So, so what we did is we made a decision to go ahead and do our adjustment for updated value. So I wanted to explain why this always came to be that we're doing that with markets. So, and I just wanted to give you a couple of numbers. We had grow approximately 15 million as of April versus this year. And I did do also an updated value of that market adjustment, which was about 11.3% piece over last year. So, sorry, I, yeah.
I'm sorry, like, again, can we go back to the, the certification piece? So I just want to make sure I tend to be, our, our number has came in at 88, right? And so then we go through this update process, which then means you have to do at least 91.
Correct.
Okay.
And what we do, yes, and what happens is the state will send us the form that says, okay, your developed parcel ratio is 88. What are you going to do? And then list choices. So the choice, one choice is not to do anything, and then you only get 88% of, you know, your home state exemptions. Or you can do an update. And if you say you're gonna do an update, you can explain to them what you're gonna do, and you can certify it on that, and that's what we do. So here's a very simplified, watered down version of how to calculate a tax rate. Basically, as you know, it's the total revenue to erase my taxation, which is your appropriations less revenue sharing, you know, and whatever you have available, divided by the total valuation of the town. That total valuation is your tax base. So once you do that division, you've got your tax rate. So here's an example that we're gonna work with throughout the slides. Say, for instance, we have a $9 million budget, right? And we have a $600 million tax base. If you divide that out, that's a $15 tax rate. So we'll say that's our, our prior rate, right, our prior year. So we're going into the new year with those numbers. So I want to tell you about growth. Growth is wonderful. It's your new construction, renovations, your splits, your subdivisions, all those things that actually add to your tax base. So when you grow the tax base, it's future revenue for the town. So in our example, we have a $9 million budget, a $600 million tax base. Let's say we have $50 million of growth, okay? So you divide that out, you now have a tax rate of 13.85. And that's not changing anybody's assessment, right? And so taxes can go down under that scenario. However, we're only dealing with one piece of the puzzle there. So let's look at the next slide. So obviously, the budget does change from year to year. So in our example, we're gonna say, okay, we have $500,000 increase to the budget. So now we have 9.5 million divided by 650 million dollar tax base. It's a 1462 tax rate. We're still haven't changed anybody's boundary, okay? So as you can see, we still have a lower tax rate in this example. And I know this isn't real life, but you can see how the numbers relate to each other and the fact that, you know, growth, the growth in this instance outpaced the additional expenditures in the park. That's like, you know, wonderful, everybody hopes for that.
This is fabulous, just like laying this out, like, this is all stuff I meant to do, but I think it's like a very, very easy strike part.
I figured for people who've been doing this for a while, it would be a nice refreshing, so thank you for that.
Yeah.
Okay, so going on to slide six, I gotta make sure. So. So when we need to do a market adjustment, it's important to understand that it does not add revenue per town. Your budget, your appropriations don't change, right? So if we need to do a market adjustment, we're gonna collect the same amount of revenue whether or not we apply our marketing. So it's important to remember that. And I wanted to, on slide seven, I want to explain what is fair, and it's kind of like what assessors do and why we do what we do. And it's a great profession, by the way. I know, like many professions, a lot of people are retiring out, and, you know, maybe, you know, new people, you know. But anyway, so we're gonna say we have a fictitious town with three different properties. Each one is assessed at $100,000. Is it fair? And so here's, let's do the math on the tax rate. So we have a $15 tax rate, and everyone pays $1500 of taxes, and we raise to $500. So it may or may not be fair, we don't really know yet until property sell. So in this example, I have property number one selling for $50,000. That gives us a 200% ratio, way, way out of line. The second property sold right on, $100,000, so our ratio is 100% for one. The third property sold for $150,000, so its ratio is acceptable, so. So part of what we do as assessors is we do an analysis or a ratio study to see where we're at. In this example, our median is 100%. So it kind of looks like it's okay, but it's really not. And we have other statistics we look at to see, all right, is, is the dispersion okay? Do we have a wide range? And in this case, we do, because the, the dispersion was 44%, and that's very, very high. We don't want that really any higher than 10, or the highest staple amount is 20. So if we do. Do you see it? I don't know, see, now it moves.
That's it.
Maybe not.
See, what's funny is it disappeared on this screen, there you go.
Okay, she's forgotten. Sorry, just the first nine, you can hit the one.
The small one, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Really, okay, so that way you can see the rest of it up there. So, so let's, we're gonna revise the assessments, we're doing a market adjustment, right? We're gonna get the assessments to more reflect what market is doing. So we have revised ratios now. So sale number one have a revised ratio of 100, sale number two 105, and sale number three 96.7. So our median is still 100, but our average is better, and our other stats are much better. So, you know, we have this example is only 2.8, that's, you know, very, very low. You'll never get that low in real life. But, but with the updated value that I did, we're at an 7.4. So, so just on the question of fairness, is it fair? It's all about being proportional, because if we didn't adjust the assessments, the owner of property number one would have been paying $750 more than their fair share, right? And then the owner of property three would have been paying less than their fair share. So, so that's just an example to illustrate the importance of.
So we, we currently go through this exercise to kind of get, understand where the ratio, that's sort of like average, the distribution, and then when, when reassessing, you sort of use that and work backwards? Is that fair?
No, basically, you're, you're changing, you're, you're doing an analysis, you're doing your ratio study, and you're looking at all of your strata. You're looking at your neighborhood, you're looking at your building type, you're looking at all these different factors, your appreciation, the quality ingredients that we have on buildings, things like that. They're all tied to costing inputs in the database. So what we do is we calibrate those to where they need to be, and then calculate the values, and then see where the stats are. And we continue this process back and forth until they get to a good range.
Okay.
Okay, so, all right, so that's slide seven. Slide eight. So this is just a description of different ways that assessors can update values. I kind of did more of a statistical update, not quite a partial update, because I really did look at all four town. And it's statistical because it's not a full measureless revaluation. Those are the very expensive revaluations that can be done. They're going to measure on lists every single property within just a few months, and you can recalibrate all the cost tables from scratch. So that's just a little information there for you. Slide nine. So just to recap, the state does require us to be between 91 and 110, and we're gonna be able to give our whole assumptions and be able to get our whole reimbursement thing. And this is just a recap, whenever we started with a $9 million budget and a $600 million allocation of a $10 tax rate. So this takes you down the road, okay, we have growth, so this is how it affects the tax rate. We had a budget increase plus growth, and that's how it affects the tax rate. And then we did a budget increase plus growth plus an update of value, okay? And so if our, say, in this example, our total valuation went up 25 million, right, from the six figure date. And that results in a lower tax rate. So the last slide. So in essence, there are three ways taxes go down. I lost my attention. Sorry about that. Yeah, restart it here. Screen. Is it recording? Okay, all right, we're back in business. Okay, so, so in essence, there's three ways a tax bill will go up, and three ways a tax bill will go down. Tax bills will go down if the budget goes down, right? Or if growth outpaces the increase in the budget, right? Or when a taxpayer's property decreases in value by more than the average due either a fiscal change to the property or to that property type being less valuable or marked at this point. And that doesn't all, sometimes happens, and you might have a, well, I'll talk about this one on the second part. So essentially, the same idea, if a bill is increasing, the budget goes up, or our growth rate is less than the rate that the budget went up, right, so. Or a taxpayer's property increased in value by more than the average due to a fiscal change to the property or due to the property type becoming more valuable or. And that happens to a higher town. You know, you might have a neighborhood that's just really popular, taking off, or maybe there's such a huge, or, or, or maybe suddenly everybody wants to do funs and stuff more. So, and they may start fearing as a higher increase than other categories. And that's it. Any questions?
So, thank you, Werner, all great. So that's a quick overview of what, how the assessor gets all the information. So the next part we're passing out to you is you made an impact on homeowner child on the left, and this is a note sheet on the right. You're, you're gonna have a revenue projection sheet that looks like this. Package, we don't need that, we're gonna talk about revenue. And then we have some calculation work. These are the 2022 municipal tax calculations, tax rate, that we run back. These resemble the ones in the color lines we've matched over. So let me start with these. These are, this formula is come from the main tax office. This is not something that myself, Werner, or Jen could already read. This is what we have to fill out, get certified, and we have to send it in each year to the main tax agency. So these numbers are all, all formulas are prefigged, and these numbers are just the numbers that we plug in based on the assessor and what we do with the budget. So we look at line one, total tax evaluation. That's gained by the assessor, and then going on down to the ones that are flexible. The tip, financing plan, that changes. And then the yellow one on line 19, that's the mill rate that's recommended.
All the yellow ones.
All the yellow ones, correct. The very bottom one, number 23, talks about the overlay. So what we do is to calculate, we use municipal appropriations, tip financing, local education, state revenue sharing, all those things are factored into these formulas. And we come up with line 14 and 15. Line 14 and 15, oh, sorry, line 17 and 18. Line 17, 18, and column three gives us a minimum tax rate and maximum tax rate based on a total tax evaluation of real estate and all the other factors included. Those two numbers, we can't, we can't set it right outside of that, we have to stick it in there. Then we start looking at the next number that becomes a parlay. The yellow bottom number in column 23, on the right-hand side, the overlay. That becomes the next parlay number. So on this sheet of your chart, right here, on the very top, I left you, I gave you a note, what is the overlay? We can focus, let's see if we're correct. The overlay is basically an account that's established annually to find anticipated property tax payments, exemptions, and unplugged taxes in that year. At the end of each fiscal year, any unused overlay surpluses, what we call closed revenue, it becomes part of an designated account if it's not applied to tax payments or those ones. So in other towns, a lot of towns that I've worked in, old towns, what they do is from time to time, especially in small towns, they'll set their position part of tax collected mill rate. They set the overlay high, barely low, and to compensate for loss in, like, say, if they had to take a lot of money out of their designated surplus, probably dump it in. They want to punch out the next year in hopes that there won't be a lot of abatements unless the money goes in. So it's based on the taxes everybody here would need. That being said, on this sheet, on the column on this side, it says net tax, you see a bunch of numbers. Those are the possible mill rates, and stat finished, we could do this year, which you could set based on the nine, in column three, number 17 and 18, the minimum tax rate and maximum tax rate. So Jen and myself sat down, and then we looked at factors that will have an impact in next year's decision-making process. Those factors are gonna be the main factors that become revenue, but I can attest to right now that with the budget, we always try to keep the budget financially as high as possible. And expend as little as there is, there are things that fluctuate. We want to keep what we call a balanced municipal budget. A balanced municipal budget is, we don't have any highs and lows in the budget. We don't stick mill rate really high, really low, and then have to come back for next year. People who have automatic payments on mortgages, they put like that, and that really bothers them. So I'd like to ask Jen, well, first, I want to go through the scenarios we gave, so.
Sorry, Tim, does, does anybody have any question that already came in self-service stuff?
Okay, so fine, yeah, just got me to the right, all right. So then, the dumb town end, you're open to the big mouth at the town meeting and said a bunch of things. I did say, in all fairness, hey, I said we can guarantee, but what I'm trying to do is we try to look at expenses and base the increase in the expense budget against the new growth, so that it hopefully comes out equally clear. We were pretty close on that, utilizing the opera funds and other monies that we had, and using monies from others who made surplus. We had a balance pretty well, correct? Including the school budget coming in, as you see here on the right side of the sheet, the green note, the school's also 1.89% increase for $159,000. When all of a sudden, that came in at 3.97%, 313,000, that's a huge increase. So you understand that in the percentage of the pinechad, our budget, total budget, county's overall, our total budget, then the county takes up 2.9, 2.9%, 2.9% of that budget. The school takes up 66.11%. Our municipal budget is only 30.99%. So when you give us an additional increase of an additional $153,000 related plan on add, it's gonna be an impact. So we tried to come close. So go to the chat, myself and Jen picked out some numbers that we thought would be reasonable. There'll be a couple of choices and a couple of questions. So the first sheet on these sheets here, the first one will show you what we thought was a safe minimum mill rate of 1434, down from apparently a 1554. That would drop the mill rate, but even doing so, setting that, that would leave us an overlay of 39,000. So if you go to this chat, the yellow chat, you would see the first sheet. So you would see the three columns. Somebody who owns $150,000 home with the first mill rate of 1434 would have an annual increase of $104, $104 of taxes a year annually. Monthly increase would be $8.16 monthly, and weekly increase would be $2. That's what would, that's what that mill rate would be. And so it goes down the line across the board as we set the mill rates. So a medium house, 400,000, which is the average house in suburban, self-urban. At 1434, 1434 mill rate, overlay of 39,000, you'd be at $233 a year tax increase at $19 a week, or $19 a month, $4 of what that's, that's true. The first one, you got the idea now, so the first one was that. The next page shows you a mill rate of 1435. And that would give you, so that would give you, if you owned a $150,000 home, taxes go from, instead of $104, a lot of. so that would give you, if you owned a $150,000 of all home, taxes go from, instead of 104, a lot of money would be 106 and so forth. That would give us $99,000 in the overlay. Two things we don't know about the overlay, how many abatements we're gonna have next year, and if there's any massive purchases or wash in this thing, surplus. So, keep going on these numbers. The next page is 1440. We set the mill rate at 1440. So, that would give us an overlay of $97,000. And, yes, so in that particular case, you would see the next line down, where that would go, and how much that would... So, the same thing, $150,000 of all home, the taxes would now go, instead of 106, all $150,000. And a $400,000 of all home, instead of $238, $259,000. So, the next page shows us a mill rate of 1446. And that gives us $154,355,000, $0.20 overlay. And then you go down to, uh, so now, a $100,000 of all home, you'd be at $2.33 a week, or $10 a month, $120 a year. $400,000 of all home, $5.46, $23.65 a month, $284 a year. In reality, as a tax collector, and in my ten years of tax collecting, I don't worry, honestly, I've only had one or two portfolios on a $400,000 of all. All my portfolios come from $150,000. Then if you go to the next page, the next one sets mill rate at 1450, still a dollar, four cents less than what we have. Gives us $193,000 in the overlay, if we, depending on where we get all the payments. That would be on $150,000 of all, $127 in the year, and weekly decrease or increase of $2.20. And on a medium-sized house, $400,000, would be a proposed increase of $301, $4 or $5, $0.78 a week, or $25 of all. The last one we came to was a match for match, reducing the mill rate by a dollar, so we didn't drop it so low. That would leave about $233,776 in the overlay. We think because there is another market adjustment this year, there could be some more abatements. So, I would say maybe 15, 1,000, so, yes, the abatements, I couldn't tell you. Um, so, using that mill rate, we drop the mill rate a dollar and not spike anything. $150,000 of all home, raise the taxes next year, $132, or $1103 a month. $400,000 of all, and be $370, $0.20. That's kind of where we start, but back of, I don't... Looking at the projection, I think, I, for us, myself and Jen, looking at the revenues, this is a native fund, we felt that's a fair place to start, it will be. Our recommendation, correct, is we, we are recommending, if you would like our recommendation, based on overall revenue, potential issues going up, would be, so 1454, all lesson we have here. Couple reasons, number one is, our under designated surplus. What do you have to talk about tonight, on the chat on the side? We took $700,000 of the designated surplus to cover expenses on the incentive, reduce taxes there. We're also anticipating taking $250,000 out of land credits for the regular winter. We have, next year, this year, we budgeted revenue sharing at about 3.5. 3.75. And we got that 5%, so that helped us overcompensate on our revenue deposit into the under designated surplus. So, this year, we're gonna put about $900,000, maybe a little, into the under designated surplus, but that's being wiped out, that was 700 to 200. So, the question you have to ask, if you want to refund that 2.5, because we have to start working on a program where we have to stop taking $700,000 when the under designated surplus appear and start trying to better balancing budget, maybe $500,000 for, we can't keep living off our means without it. And hopefully, with an economic growth that brings new business growth to us, that helps raise that valuable win, win, real estate valuation higher. So, that being said, want to go over the revenue piece real quick?
Yeah, and designated?
And designated fund balance.
Yes, can I just, I just wanted, I have a question and, um, clarification for everybody, so. These colors, I love it, um, I'm gonna talk about this one. Um, so, the first thing is the val, the valuation at the top for these examples. Is this, this is assuming the recent reval, but what, I don't know, the revaluation.
This is, that's right.
Okay, and then, the other piece that I just want to make clear, everybody, is like the lever that we really have to have is the overlay. Like, we set the overlay at this value, then the tax rate becomes this.
Don't deal around, set the tax rate, and it sets the overlay.
But they're, but they're, they're core, yeah, they're...
They're core, you got it right. So, whatever you set the tax rate at, will give you your value of the growth.
Yeah.
So, if you set, if you set that, you can, you can drop the mill rate all the way down to 1434, you have a minimal overlay, but next year, we have to recruit some money, and you have to put the mill rate back up to 1554, that's a huge spike in the mill rate people's taxes.
I guess, like, the, the decision point for us is really where we want to be over.
That's going to decide the factor, I mean, that's, other than that, I mean, you set the mill rate whatever you want. We looked at all the factors, and so the other designated fund balance piece, which looks like here, that's, yeah, go ahead.
You guys are like magicians, so I appreciate it. I'm seeing here on picture, it says proposed annual increase. But all of these mill rates are lower than what we have now, so they wouldn't be increases.
Correct, well, they are increasing because, remember, we originally had a balance that would be equal. But then, like, they have to cover on a 30% budget of a 100% budget. I got 100 and, I got $153,000 of all bills from the school to have to cover. If that increases, we add that in, that will be increasing the budget that I had to cover. We're gonna have to make up that up, so fortunately, though, in, in a normal world, if I had had that number, we'd have to have an equal number than I did, like, I heard that, I'm saying it for all of us.
It, it makes sense that our mill rate would go down, because the other end of the seesaw is overall valuation. So, if all overall valuation is not all things equal, mill rate should go down. But that's, that's what's actually happening, and, uh, just listening. And, you know, if we go with 1454, which puts $240,000 in the overlay, say we shoot $60,000 in abatements, it looks like, kind of, we've made, I think we've made kind of a rash decision, $200,000 of all of those to those end rooms, because basically try to cover that. Seems to me as we don't have a lot of trouble. But, there's, the other part of that is, Ken's on assessing, but we have the warrant, I guess the voters will decide. But, going into that, uh, warrant, I just hope that taxpayers and voters are informed to know exactly what's, what that means in terms of, of their overall budget.
On the undesignated balance sheet, this worksheet, I'd like to have Jen have a little bit of the scale of that.
So, as of June 30th, 2021, we had $6,34,612 in net unaccounted on it. And we took out $700,000, um, to help reduce the mill rate for last year. And we'll be putting back in, um, about a million dollars in additional revenue. 800 of that is projected to be additional revenue. And most of that is all coming from revenue sharing, because we budgeted at 3.75%. And, um, taking governor bills, she was able to give us the full 5% halfway throughout the year. So, that's where that extra money is coming from, and that's, um, should be for two solid years. So, we booked the revenue sharing at the full 5% this year. So, we do not expect to have these overages being put into the undesignated fund at the end of next year. Especially with the cost of oil, with fuel, and everything else going up. I, I will gonna have these quick combined expenses as well. So, that's something else to think about when you're picking this overlay amount, that the actual budget, revenue, and expenses isn't gonna be funding the undesignated fund at this time next year. So, and if you look at the second page, um, that, this is part of our audit that states that we have, um, a formal fund balance policy that we had adopted, that we have to keep 10% of the town's general fund budget plus, um, one month equal of expenses, of all of our expenses, and we have to pay the school every month, or they're, on me very quickly. Um, so, that constitutes $3,324,700. That's our base rate going into the new fiscal year that we have to keep as a minimum in there. So, if we keep taking that $100,000 out of there every year, we're gonna very quickly deplete our savings accounts, if you will. Got to remember something, that is gonna happen with, you know, a building, a fire truck, ignore that. So, all of these pieces play into our decision as to what we were picking for a mill rate slash overlay.
So, Jen, and these, um, like FY 23, 24, or 25, where we got like $100,000 under, $100,000 rest, you're, you're making the same, that those are gonna cancel each other out?
No, those are both, we're hoping are gonna be going in.
Okay.
So, I'm hoping that we were, we're gonna come under budget and over budget, I was hoping that we're gonna sweep five, but I think the days of having that million dollars go back in there, um, with, now that the governor has probably put us up to that 5%, we've always been anticipating it, but not knowing exactly when it was gonna happen. So, now, we kind of got that solid two-year budget amount from the state that we're banking on and going with that.
So, now, now when they put the 4%. Now, keep this document for you, and look at, look at the yellow numbers for 23, you see FY 23, $700,000, $350,000. That's all the draw, a lot of the check. FY 24 is $600,000, so that's if we apply a 700 budget, the expense budget. Understand, so, that means I just got the expense budget, I just got $100,000 of all of the expense budget. That's been, that's a top cell, that's a tight budget, I'm sure.
We saw the yellow line you demonstrate, or it's demonstrate money that we're pulling out of our lending account.
Right. So, if in 24, you want all $600,000, or I'm putting in $100,000, I, I still have to cut the budget. And, um, that means for the next two or three years, cutting budget for our expense budget. $100,000 of all, every budget, you know, that's time, right, I can't promise the taxes prior. So, just keep that in mind, so, my job today, the Jen's job, the Bernard's job, thank you very much. These girls did a great job, they were organizers, it was a couple months where they had, filled with the way, and I want to thank God, do we together, and... Um, my job is to give you all the information, my current condition. I think, setting that overlay, definitely factor, go ahead, and just say that land credits, that helps give us a little buffer, just to protect us in the event. But I can't, so, for instance, we lose the town governor, $200,000 of all. Town government's only insured with a space guy, it's only worth $39,000 of all, but if it was checked, $39,000, oh, they don't give us a cost replacement. Cost replacement is only in the wire, forms, and advances. That's it, everything else is cost value replacement. So, if we lose a property, we, we get the cost, that has to come out of the, to, just... Those are all the factors I have to give you to tell you what to choose. Questions, thoughts, answers, ideas, recommend?
Based on the evidence presented, I think we should go with, uh, 14.54.
I agree with that, I think, um, I, I'm not, definitely not in favor, I mean, other than you guys talked about it, that's a major standpoint, I think that that makes a lot of sense, but also, um, or, or, where we currently at, 14.54?
Yeah, so do you mean it all?
Yeah, and so, I, I really don't like the idea of kind of like, it's like years here, you know, and if we were to bring it down to 14.34, that's a big drop, and, you know, I, I would rather kind of keep it a little more steady, but I think bringing to the taxpayer a decrease in the mill rate is so, I mean...
Either way, it's gonna be an increase in taxes, so it really doesn't matter if we create. We can set the mill rate wherever we want, we don't pay more. We gotta do what we think is best for next year. Valerie, Jack are right on point, 14.54 is a homeowner I don't like, but I understand why.
And just to clarify, like, I think you touched on this earlier, we're talking about if we were to go 14.54, we would be decreasing your mill rates, but that rate is being applied to a larger number now. That's valuation of the increase, which is where we're talking about the increase.
I have to go to the school budget either, or I'll still talk on that, sorry.
So, just, just, and I'm not criticizing, but in the ten years I've been a manager, I've never had a school do it. I had to make small adjustments, I've never had a blow, or, that was just, like, any reclamation, thanks to the assessor. And for us, we only have a 30% of municipal budget, $150,000 of all, a lot of money for our kids. And again, so I understand, now, Clark, can you help me with how the school budget pass by? Give me a rough ratio, 2 to 1, 3 to 1, 4 to 1? Does your shot number, it's not related to you?
At least 3 to 1, probably, for those who voted, so there's a little number, unfortunately.
But, ironically, irregardless of this, the tax paid is told us, and that's okay, that's, that's what they're, there are some not, not all, but by a 3 to 1 margin, they move in to do that school. I'll answer any questions? Is this clear in what?
It, it's as clear as a round corner. Sorry to interrupt you, so, this became the, um, to go down rates, yeah, sign our tax.
I need some help. We have a whole companion list of supporting documents that reflect, I believe, what's passed out.
You may not have the updated one, this was updated since, so that, that one, yeah, that one that went out on the, on the last page.
So, it'd be the last page.
So, someone help me with the formal motion. Make the motion to set the 20, 23, 22, 23, Jen? Question 23, tax rate, 1454. And then, so, we...
I would hope that we, uh, set the tax rate pursuant to the information presented, I, uh, so, line, oh, we just, line 19, which shows out, dollars, dollars, at 0.0154.
Okay, that's 0.0145.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the, it's up on the sheet.
You just missed a number.
Okay, I'll say it again, 0.0145. Is that due for what?
They, they, and so, and that here, 0.224.
That's stated, sure. Yeah.
Okay. Second, your motion, and second, any other discussion? All those upsetting the tax rate at 14.54, say aye. 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 Any votes? Motion passes, aye to you.
Yeah.
Yep. We may sign your files, that's for sure.
All right, Jen. Jen, thank you. That was easy. It's one of our last steps here as far as explanation and paperwork. Fantastic.
Those are all the spots to sign the four D.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Do we need a motion to sign? Please, or do you sign? Motion to sign?
It's time to do the business.
That's what we just did, all right?
You said tax rate.
So we need another motion.
Chair, you can assign the tax for this year twenty-two, twenty-three, which is that municipal tax rate.
Okay. Motion in a second, all those in favor? I, any votes? Motion passes, aye to you. And then for the York County Assessor's return, need a motion to this as well.
Chair, we signed the York County Assessor's.
We have a motion in a second. Send them to a clarification for our gentleman. Uh, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any votes? Passes, aye to you. Thank you everyone that brought up our board assessors.
Board assessors.
All those in favor of adjournment for assessors, change, aye. Aye. Any votes? Passes, aye to you. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Um, I would like to offer a, a motion that the council agrees to, uh, new business number one, uh, to the top of our agenda. Right, your motion in a second, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any votes? Passes, aye to you. All right, we will take up this number one appointment of economic director. Um, and I think Tim, I'll let him go ahead and set the context here for.
Madam Chair, after the council approved position for the funding being paid for over ten, for the next ten years, we uh, advertised for an economic developer, economic development director. Um, we got three applications, we picked, we interviewed all three. I asked you to sit on that ticket board. Uh, we went through this with them. And with that being said, we come to our choice tonight. Uh, it's my choice and the committee's choice to appoint Denise Vallet, who's here, who's currently the economic director for Oaxaca. Uh, she is the guru of economic development, TIPS. She taught me everything I know about TIPS. I can say that proudly. Um, I think she'd be a great asset to the town of Saltboro and to our team here. Um, to move town forward with our vision that we have for economic development, U B development, downtown revitalization, tip developments, uh, comprehensive plan development, and just helping us move the whole plan forward to the next decade. And I'm super excited that the recommender, the council, I think she'll help fulfill the championship deal that I was working on.
Denise, would you like to do anything you want to say?
Just want to thank you for being here, we serve many, many, many municipal governments over thirty-five years and we just love working with towns and communities that are accepted to looking into opportunities and I think you're right for that. It's a great area, big career. As most of you do know, I have run this city here for twenty-five years, so it's been a homecoming for me for many, many years and I really feel really disturbed. Both being part of Tim's team, really enjoying the way he presents himself and works with his team. Absolutely. The energy in town hall is palpable, so I just want to make that statement. Well, disturbing, starting in September.
You got that point box for them. Good job.
All right, I would like to make a motion.
I'll move to uh, for the appointment of Ms. Vallet as uh, director. So to actually put that in, second.
Thank you. Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any votes? Motion passes, aye to you.
Denise will stop on September twelve, be her first day. Yeah, we already started working on several projects that are going to be going. Go down and come on board.
Very much.
Congratulations.
You too. Thanks for that. All right, thank you everyone. All right, we can jump into the remaining minutes.
I sent out the, the respect to actually taking that previous meeting and different impacts, corresponds back and forth. So I guess I'd like to uh, start the discussion of appropriateness of a reconsideration of the resolution. We should give it a second reading, a little bit, which is kind of quick for me last time. So um, just looked at where I was moving and found that it was appropriate. At some point in the meeting, my track, my understanding that any item for reconsideration of the previous meeting should be done before approval of the minutes of that meeting. So would that be appropriate to move to reconsider uh, actual town council to approve resolution five, six.
So what was your motion to reconsider?
Reconsider.
Reconsider.
Yeah, and actually taking on July twenty-sixth, respect to the resolution. You have any white nationalists in the trade groups?
I have a motion to reconsider, in a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, aye.
I'm stating because I wasn't here. All right, that's me.
Oh. Say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? My motion passes, four, zero, one extension.
As I extended this cover letter uh, last Friday. I gave some thought to the resolution that we, Jeff drafted and we voted on at last week, to condemn white nationalist groups, extremists. We also discussed following vote that we should consult with the attorney. And I think, thank you very much for voting to reconsider, by the way, because this opens up our opportunities. Since the year, I'm sorry, say, respect for the buyer. And um, as a general principle, I, I feel it's important for as a, as a method of proceeding, that we, we discuss ideas, we do ideas, but we stay away from speaking to individuals. So I, rereading the resolution, it seemed to me that we're going towards perhaps individuals. And so as a result, I, I redrafted resolution and, and broadened it to broaden simply some stating white extremists and uh, but to also include other uh, other groups. You know, defined in current titles as ethno-nationalism, neo-fascist, white nationalist, like we wanted this to be used in white organizations to dominate, marginalize, suppress, be greater than nationalism, race, or not white, that is. I wanted to have as a general statement, the other thing is, in this day and age, one, one can put up identifying group. Because our groups think we redefine daily as what, you know, what's conservative today versus most conservative in nineteen sixty-four, what's a liberal today versus. So all these things can be warped. And the other thing came to my attention, that's just my mind, if we, you know, the resolution read that condemning white nationalism and extremist groups, well, what if the group came before and gave the town and said, nationalists, we're neo-white nationalists. It's essentially the same thing, but they redefine themselves. So I thought a more general approach might be more appropriate. Uh, sent out the revised language. To the council consideration. And uh, I think I'll just probably stop talking there.
So anyway, it's a good, everyone has a chance to review your Jackson additions. Any concerns, questions, thoughts, or anything?
Jeff, I mean, you took the, the time to draft the original resolution. And so kind of going along to your uh, your word.
Yeah.
I can give you up a second. I, where I ended up.
Yeah, no, I, I to be honest, I feel I use more briefly. I believe that I'm motion to reconsider. I think that everybody should have an opportunity to reconsider it, or that's why I, I voted in favor of it. I don't agree with the agreement. I think that uh, that the original was fine, that if a lawyer verified that, and I think that just in principle, if it be just a reservation, um, there's no action, like a law is not moving forward because of it. I feel like it's uh, the original is strong enough and legal enough to just move on with the original, with the original. However, I do, I appreciate your expertise, I would think that at some places it does water down a little bit, but at the end of the day, we're, we're making the same. In, in that, that, at the end of the day, um, that's what I, I would like to do as a company. So however we get there, so.
I, you know, I appreciate taking, both of you taking the time to draft this. Um, I, I do like, you know, Jeff's initial language, specifically writing out the rules, but I understand your reasoning now that you've defined it where you want capture, it's possible they're applying themselves. So I think that we should adopt it.
I uh, I agree too. I think, I think it's really important, I think what we're, we're, we're doing is, is to sort of take a stand against certain behaviors. Uh, and I think, I think both versions are, are doing that um, in, in excellent ways, but I think people change, humans change, language changes how we can define things. Things change. And I think this is a little, I, I do agree with Jeff, but I think it's a little more kind of easier focus as opposed to like specific, who's affected.
So just, at this point, I'd like to uh, just uh, just revisit to the record, put the term attorney out of sight. And uh, I mean, I'm finding that in the
I know it.
Above, above what he said there, he didn't put it as he, the only other thing he said, it was kind of on, naturally what we're talking about. He said, every day, there's new, there's new anti-socialist groups popping, popping itself. And continues every day. One day, there may be ten, there may be twenty. And he said, it changed. And he said, the resolution legally was fine. Not telling anybody what behavior they can and can't take, what they can and can't do legally or per protocol of the resolution. He said, in other places that have done this, he said, I recommend even more generic behavior. So that you don't single out one group, you're encompassing the behavior of others. You're telling everybody, any group becomes a town. We expect this to be behavior we encompass here. That was all he, and he said, but that's just a, that's just a um, Bill's Oscar. He said, that's Bill, he said, that's not, you know, that's not a legal town. That's why he put it in. So that's just my thing. What he gave you in the email was a legal document. He didn't print, print upon anybody's rights, you know, telling people what to think. The justice is just agreeing that this is, you know, behavior that we don't think of as actually we are upset.
All right, we are in the midst of reconsidering, so that means that now we could go to adopt the.
Yeah, now I would move to uh, affirm the action taken on the resolution. That white nationalists.
All right.
It leaves out a big catch.
Thanks, Jason.
Yeah, it leaves out a big segment. You want it again, right? It's called white nationalist. You can call it that. Leaves out everybody else. Leaves out all the others. I got it. We're all inclusive. But if you do that, you put it right on one. I don't believe as a council, I don't believe as the town council. That's our role. Our role is to make sure the town is inclusive, we are inclusive, all of our stuff is inclusive, but I'm not sure. We should put that flat out, that's what we're calling it. There's a lot of other groups out there that are wrong, a lot of bad things that none of us agree with, that aren't white nationalists.
So you're, John, you're bringing this up from like a title perspective.
I, yeah, yeah, a lot like the last time we had, we had issues with it. It's the same way. If we're going to do it in public, it has to be just like we want to be fair and inclusive, everybody, this has to cover everybody in my mind. We're going to pass a resolution. It needs to be broad enough to cover the behavior of the groups, not a certain group.
So that's a, a suggestion, I guess, to be a resolution, denying white nationalist, nationalist and extreme as we can hear.
So what a group group could say, that isn't what is doing, that is participating in this behavior. We're not saying we condemn that. We're saying we only condemn this. That's why I, my
A resolution denying extremist behavior.
I'm okay with that. Anything that we can do that puts out, again, we are open to everyone, right? We, this community has always been this way. Community's been right for everybody, I don't, since I lived here, which is as I've been born in those. So it's how it's always been, but this doesn't reflect that. I don't feel this reflects that. I read what Bill put and I read what Jack had awful. I just feel it needs to be a little broader, not one group. Not one.
And you're, John, I'm making sure you're, you're specifically speaking of the title, not the body.
Yeah, because the body covers a lot, but the title is one group. I'm just looking.
I, I hear, and I, I hear. As of whatever, eighteen days ago, we didn't even have this as an option in this court, dying as a town council. I feel like that's provides some definition that we can build on. I don't know that, I just, I, I rest on what we are sent to the lawyer and use script or the, for us. If you want to broaden it, any one of us can start that ball rolling and broaden it or, or make an event that Jack can, and Jess can accept if you want.
Okay, I think we have a motion on the table under its current title. So I think we need a motion to pull the current motion, or we need to proceed with the voting on this title.
I think we have a, we have a motion this second, I think. Awesome. And that's enough. Again, this is you, other people have anything to add at the table?
All those in favor of affirming the revised resolution, uh, resolution of the white nationalist. Say aye. Aye. Any votes?
Yeah.
What I post, push, push packs for.
Make sure those notes reflect the fact that I agree with it, which is all I, I'm going to give first publicly.
Stay off social media.
I plan on that.
We don't end up terrorists. We don't end up terrorists.
Alright, so to get us back to the agenda, so we have. First, our minutes for our public hearing from July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two.
And Chair, I vote, I vote, I move to accept the public hearing minutes of July twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two.
We have a motion in second. Any discussion? All of their exciting, or adopting, coming as July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed? That's a best five zero. Nice, we have the, uh, something about July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, and I. Proceed your own question, given that we just. Revised action that was our public hearing these minutes, how do you proceed with this?
I think the minutes reflect the action of the council on twenty-sixth. These minutes reflect what we did to confirm. Well, reconsidered for the.
So we don't need to change this out.
Before we do the twenty-sixth. My, Barbara?
Correct.
Assuming that there are no.
Yes.
Tenets or whatever, nevermind. Okay, yeah, I will just accept the minutes of the town council, July twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two. That's it.
You have a motion in second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We need to treasure tomorrow. We tell one, one for previous, one for today.
And Chair, I move to sign the treasures warrant, we have twenty-two thousand, four hundred forty-one dollars, twenty-nine cents, dated before two thousand twenty-two. Second.
You have a motion in second. Jen, I'm assuming that that one applies to previous this year.
Correct.
Thanks, Jeff. All of the favor of signing the twenty-fourth, twenty thousand, four hundred forty-one dollars, three cents. Say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed? That's a good.
I will.
Yeah.
And Chair, I move we sign the treasures warrant, it's now five hundred fourteen thousand, six hundred eight dollars. The United States state of four thousand, two. Second.
You have a motion in second for discussion. This does include school payment, except for twenty-five thousand dollars, and this is for this year twenty-three. Any other discussion? All of the favor of signing this treasure warrant, say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed? Thanks, everyone. For the first one, and state center roads to municipality.
Okay. We met with, July twenty-seventh, we met with DOT. We met with the, Carrie. Cass Onway, program analysis, Pete Poplin, and DOT director, community services, division, today. Region one, DOT transportation operations manager. Jay, myself, and that. Yeah. To discuss that, do we have a contact, determining certain sections of the road that. State law maintained over the town of South Broadway for annual maintenance and for repair, so. They provided us the list. I created, I gave an executive summary report, so I will go all the way to have all asked. I pretty much gave you all the information you needed, all the official cost of, we've got additional costs at work. It's gonna be twenty thousand. They're asking us to take over, we take over. Essentially, we maintain most of this already. Probably don't maintain is two thirty-six out to Tom Giddy Police Station. Going further, depending what we want to tear it up. So the next step in the process is Joe from the state. Jerry, my crowd, works director. Will meet, look at all of, any list of repairs that needs to be done, present that back to Peter, who well done, they, they'll try to get it done. Hopefully we did, and by where we can say. We feel good about this. I did learn something through the meeting, is I said, well, I can't approve any of this. I'll take it to the council. And as Peter looked at it, he said, well, they don't approve of you. This isn't anything to be approved. This is just what's gonna happen. You're just gonna fix the tape. So I'm picking July first next year, and I'll ask you to have a recommendation. I want your stamp approval for whatever it is that is or is not. I'm not making that decision at the moment. This is, this is a minimal. You know, so when we get all the work put together, Joe and Jay will meet. We'll propose that to Peter. Once we get confirmation, I'll come back, you'll say. For a non-admitted resolution or whatever it is, that's what we're gonna do on July first.
Can I ask a question on the map? This is in the supporting doc, so you said the whole money. So I'm assuming everything yellow is what it is, so.
Correct.
Okay, and then you said this, the, the chunk, I guess, that is incremental or new to us from a maintenance standpoint, is, is just the two thirty-six, right?
Correct. We're already, we're already logged in here, the rest.
Okay. We'll have summer maintenance.
Right, we'll have summer maintenance.
But the plowing, the painting.
Plowing, all sitting in the KPR.
It's just.
So the piece that we're gonna look at right now, they want to do a walk at Tom Giddy, Jay, that think that's gonna be a. Can't replace their turn. Bob broke their house, it's bad enough, people, right, you know, most of our black light. Well, I got, we're gonna be talking, the state didn't say there was, you know, there was, they were all talking about safety issues. So, you know, they end up trying to get out of ninety-one, whatever, I don't think, the lights, so.
We don't want to own a bridge. State owns the bridge. Proximity, we're true. We go down that firewall, the bridge.
Okay.
So there's another question I have. What is your population of South Broadway based on the two thousand twenty census?
We just under eight thousand.
Seventy-nine, seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine eighty-five.
Okay, so we exceed seventy-five hundred. And that's stipulated by the law.
Yeah.
You're spot on, you don't, even if you turn around, I know Jay doesn't want to, but we don't want on a bridge. Very own one, like finally, by you, we don't want on another one. Mr. Mayor, Chair, I have taken a look, I haven't walked it, but I, it pulls attention simply driving home. Think they have lower in the main street, any tools, county jobs. There's a lot of crack. The same, it's like a joint crack coming up through edges of previous utility trenches. The same. Lots of cracks emerging that were covered up with a little field project when I sat around. I think that might have been, that was a small portion, it's carrying on the roads. We just have a very sorry.
They're gonna go over everything together and make a list of all the things that need to be fixed. There's a couple sinkholes over there that Jay's concerned about, we're gonna have a great hearing, so.
I don't know the three point three. You know, numeric classification in terms of roadway condition. Broke, at least that's.
Well, he said, that's where, that's in your documents. He said all roads are higher than the states, so that, that were already, he said, would already be transferred, everything. Transferred greatly, greatly than what we do three point three here. So, you know, we're gonna try to push as much done as we can, but as you know, this is just another. So that was all thing that came up, get thrown on my list, I would be exactly.
We will get some additional revenue.
Get about twenty-five.
It. Just like, you feel like that's. English members.
So we start with one cost, with the, yeah, labor cost. Cost, cost of salt, sand, just through, man, it's possibly.
Well, I, I would say that. Considering alligator cracking, those areas like that, that's clearly assigned to a road earlier, in that to their location. And also, if, if there are cracks showing in the way, we can see the crack showing right now, a very minimum issue, cracks here. That'll keep the water out of the place.
Yeah.
If what I can say to freeze in that pool, so.
Certainly. Without enough accuracy. I, you know, I was kind of judging along, well, I'm not, you know, I don't approve, it's a lot of damage, you know, so people right at each other. Don't, they don't approve either.
Did they give us a truck? That? Did they give us a truck?
Well, they bring a violent with twenty grand.
Yeah, they'll give us, they'll give us a truck, they'll have some.
The state uses on the road that way, and we have a truck.
Berth is in the same situation as we are, and when they were speaking with Barbara, Hampton and Appleland. And part of the process of Jay walking through the roads is making sure that they're inventorying the roads correctly, so anything that has recognized as a road is actually listed in the map, so we're getting as many dollars as we have in the state as far.
Yeah, you were, I figured, I forgot what you said. I didn't say anything, yeah, she signed it. Yeah, so you were there.
Yeah, and you know, Tim said, what if we try to push this out, and he's like. If, if you can, like a flat out Pearson statue.
Yeah, I mean, give it a law, you know what it is, what it's gonna be.
So Tim, for, for this evening, do, do you need us to take a vote on the dates, given that we have really no power here?
No, 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 nothing. Don't suggest, I just wanted to give you an information, something, I think, or.
Okay. Any other questions, or anything? Cool. Alright, public comment, I've got a good crowd here today, so anyone here who would like to speak right, if it's not on our agenda later on. It's over here. So if you stand up and say your name and your address.
Other, Brad Christop, Hope Fields Road.
Yeah.
Listening to the assessment for. Of, we're very informed, thank you. I was trying to understand. If, if there's a clear commitment for revenue sharing by the state for the next two years. How is it that we're concerned that we would be unable to replenish because of?
Because right now, the past few years, we've been putting in seven hundred thousand dollars in, in on the residents behalf. So that we're not raising the government to cover that seven hundred thousand dollars. So we're pulling out of our payment, that amount of money every year. So if we're not replacing it at the end of the year, we're gonna run out of money. And then we're gonna have to increase the residents, we're gonna have to cover that seven hundred thousand dollars that the town is currently covering.
Right, but was my understanding that the revenue sharing, lot did five percent for the next two years. That those funds would cover that, and as such, they wouldn't replenish the.
No, so those, see, and I didn't get your name, what's your name?
Brad.
Brad? So what it is, Brad, when we create, when we do an expense budget, here we do the budget. Final budget is we apply the revenues that we calculate coming in the next year, so. Last year, when we, when Jen did the revenue. She did state revenue sharing at three and a half percent, but we got paid for the five percent. That extra money. Went into the undesigned, went in the undesigned surplus, but it's being drawn out by the expense budget this year. What we did for next year, we didn't leave it at three and, we didn't leave it at three and a half percent. And figured the base budget was three and a half percent revenue, we put in five percent. And then applied that five percent revenue, full revenue, to the expense budget, so there won't be any extra revenue. Coming in next year, well, the five percent is applied to the expense budget already, okay? That makes sense?
Yes.
So now there's no, there's no extra revenue that we were using, and, and I say there is, there may be. There may be an excise tax, and it could be in some other tree growth areas and other, other revenue streams, there might be.
But it won't be to that amount.
There, there won't be that huge of an amount. So if we keep going to the well every year, and taking that seven hundred thousand out. We're gonna eventually drive it well. So we gotta kind of bring that down and balance that out. Because the other problem is, and I'll be completely frank, you know, no pockets of politics involved at all. So there's a election in November, and a new governor could come in. And a new governor could take a look at that and say, I don't want state revenue sharing at five percent, I want it at three percent, and the next high angle of budget. Do only three percent, get that back, now we're right back to over reduced rates. So we're just trying to project out forward to make sure that we keep the pig bank open.
And what is that, keeping the pig bank open, like, let's say?
Right now, there's six million, and we have to keep three point one million. And we're putting seven hundred thousand dollars out of that every year and to covering.
Reduce the tax rate. In the expense budget. But we could, because we had a couple of years to replenish it. So this year we took seven hundred thousand, now we're gonna take out another two fifty for annuals. So we're fortunate, we don't have a lot of payments, but the tax rate they said was all rolling. There'll be hopefully some money at the end of next year to put a little bit of pushing back in. Thank you. Does that make sense to you?
Yes.
George Muller, twenty fourth and Street. I've lived here now for eighteen years, although my house is twenty-six. For eighteen years, I've begged and asked the town to do something about speeding on Fourth and Street. Now the old. Police chief is gone, who said, well, I'm not stopping anybody, and I said, do thirty-five mile an hour, which he didn't do either. There are approximately, last count, I think, count about twelve thousand people dying by my house every day. And about, let's say the majority of fifty percent, fifty-one, fifty-two, it's probably more, are doing thirty-five, forty, and there are people doing even higher speeds. So when I'm upstairs, and I, I play this, I have to practice a lot. When I'm upstairs and I hear tire noise, and all the other noises that are created because people are speeding, it is wearing me down. And I'm still digging. The last time I was in front of the council, I was told there's no magic bullet. Magic bullet is giving people the ticket, showing people that in this town you can't speed. It is a twenty-five mile an hour zone. And I know it's a thoroughfare, and I think about ninety-five percent of the people who drive through there have nothing to do with the town. So Elliot does it on two thirty-six. If I come home in the evenings, I know where they are. And people, you never know where, but you know, there's different spots, and people know about it, and they do basically a speed limit. And that's on two three five, which is a higher speed. And this is twenty-five. We have the hospital there, we have assisted living there, and we have children there, and it's. In the daytime, Sundays, as of ten o'clock in the morning, I can't make a left turn because the traffic's backed up almost to the memorial. Now, and on the other side, they're all racing down, and just having a policeman stand there, yeah, it slows them down. Having that machine, yeah, it slows them down. As soon as they're passed, they speed up. If there's no enforcement. It's just gonna go on and on. Now, if I was thirty years younger, I'd sell the damn place to someplace else where I can't do that. So, and I have a great place, like a block. Every time, every place in town, we're there five, six, seven minutes. And I have a nice property, and, you know, there's also the noise, of course, that's something the police won't do. Motorcycles, right? There is a state law against excessive noise. Oh, I don't know why, why the state allows motorcycles to be that loud all the time. You'll have six, seven, eight of them standing in front of my house idling because they're backed up, and then revving and making, and my house vibrates. It shakes, it's just constant, it's a constant noise from early in the morning until about six o'clock at night. It's constant wishing, and tire noise, and trucks, even our school buses don't follow. So I listen to town, how we have a, like, I don't know if we have a new police chief, but if we build. Look concerted effort, it's just, and I mean, I have a big fun, it's walk across the street here, you always take, you always never know. Everybody's speeding. Still, what consideration?
I'll lean on Sam a little bit, but yes, you're correct, we do cover the police chief, and I believe our police department now, police act.
So.
So we're on our question.
One position, so we put on a new arm, sort of, for traffic control, exactly that, to do this more traffic. Enforcement in the town, we haven't been able to hire one yet. Doesn't position find it, we're trying to get one here.
It's funny, because eighteen years ago, I was outside with the chief. It's funny, because eighteen years ago, I was on site with the chief. Because I played, and he told me the same thing, I don't have, I don't have a officer yet, and I, I will hire one, when you hire him, you put him in another.
Hold on, that's not what I'm telling you. I'm telling, I'm telling you that as a new town manager, the police chief, that we created a budget position for traffic enforcement spots. One of the things that I'll tell you in my next report, we did eighty, eighty four traffic spots in two weeks. So it's not like we're not doing enforcement yet.
No, no, I understand, and I understand.
And I will, I will have to you, I will talk to the police chief tomorrow, having traffic that area for a while, see if that can help. Yeah, I'm talking about if we have any extra money, some of those permanent traffic controls lines, the flash. There is national statistics across nation showing that we are, so we, I, myself, the council, we wanna help you, we wanna help. I understand, I've been over, the fact that I went over, I've had several calls, I've driven over there, I've walked, I grew. And we're trying to make a difference, where it's, it's gonna take some time, but we will try, I promise you we will make it.
Okay, thank you.
We'll try, I'll ask that. And I just get your name and other, like, team, if that could.
George Pollard, and you have a PR. What's your comment, George? Created for two six five seven. Three eight four twenty six fifty two.
What's your address?
One twenty fourth and Street, one twenty.
Yeah, so I've left the points all the way aside, one seventy four, we got you, so. I, we, we know it's an issue, and I, we'll try to see if we can make some kind of difference there, if we'll try. One of the things I want you to understand, you know this, that you've been discussing and talking about traffic issues since nineteen eighty seven, so. If we don't address them somehow, we'll have a lot of law to be able to fix it now. This has been studied for a long time, why is that equal?
I believe that if, if somebody driving through town knows that they, that there's gonna be police, that they may get a ticket, then they will slow down. And if you do get a ticket, and if you, if you go like thirty miles an hour, you're already twenty percent above the speed limit. So if you're doing thirty five, that's even, that's forty percent. In a twenty five mile zone, that, that's probably points that, uh, on your ticket, and that could cause problems with your insurance. That's the way it's gotta go, right? Because where it spreads, you know, you get the, 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 the concrete trucks coming by with their big blue tires, you know, that's noise, I can hear them.
George, sorry, I, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah, but.
I'm gonna go on to my own, this time, Tim is absolutely going to follow up with you, thank you so much for coming this evening. Um, we really appreciate it, we'll follow up with you, but I wanna go.
Okay, sure.
Thank you, sorry. Um, anyone else in the public?
Yes, Audrey Forty of twenty one Robby Road. All right, in reference to the resolution which modified, um, I have thought about this considerably for the past, since the last meeting. And I don't know if there are any, uh, rules or regulations in town ordinances or anything that regulate the behavior of people. There's always been kind of a generic common courtesy, for example, um, people don't put signage up at the monument. I don't know why, but if you put a sign up there, you're gonna be told, they get down right off.
They add a policy to that.
It's a, it's a policy.
Yeah, that's the study of the, uh, the Veterans World Memorial Monument, but you can't.
Okay, all right, well, I, I wondered if, for example, in Kittery, that precipitated the, uh, the resolution. Were these people, did anyone investigate, were, were these people from away, professional troublemakers? Uh, because they could come to your town too. And I'm sure a lot of people were surprised and challenged though several years ago, when people showed up with torches. So it might be worth thinking about, uh, do we have any regulations for some sort of, that would regulate, as John said, behavior? Not, not just the nature of behavior in town, that's all it is.
We have laws. Regulations of laws, you know, state statutes laws. Beyond that, I, I don't know if this statute is passing. Indisagable ordinances that are supposed to be here, things like, oh, watering in certain area, parks are closed at a certain time, that's probably gonna affect the behavior. Those things, but beyond that, I don't know.
Pat Robinson, Broad Street. Um, I think you should revisit the title of the resolution, I agree wholly with John. He, he, I heard him say that he favor of on the revenue sentence, not like the title. Because of like Nash, Nash was named, I agree with him, I think you should just revisit that and rename.
Thank you. All right, town manager.
On the highway, uh, that old fuel tank needs to be replaced, we've got that done. Uh, we haul out body one, loads of leaves off from the transfer station. They did some ditching on Hooper Sand Road to take care of a, uh, ditch that thrown in and was flooding somebody's property. Uh, trees cut in front of the office is free. We cross-trained a couple employees on new road side haulers so that they can have multiple people doing it, not just one, so it gets a lot of work done. Under the police plan, in the last two weeks, had seven arrests, four traffic accidents, eighty four traffic stops. Um, chief and lieutenant of Melverick Academy, and they're looking at their budget to potentially add a resource also for next year. The Suburban Police Department participated in National Lighthouse last Tuesday, um, they went to. How is it, Mark? George York. Um, they handed out water and ice box to the kids, uh, they're gonna continue to participate next year, they'll be able to do success. In the budget, we purchased a new police staff, protect this position today. Honorable mention, you are scar awesome, he completed the fire line instructor course training in July, so that we be close instructor for our talent. Lieutenant Alton's working diligently with the school for emergency planning in the event of a current incident. Hopefully set up table talk exercise within the next few weeks for all the energy nation agencies involved. Quiet about in the last two weeks, had sixteen calls, here today is two hundred and thirty seven. Uh, the new chief, the medium staff, are reviewing short and long term goals. Uh, he played out the office, they're working and looking at. Um, becoming first responder EMS license to help solve our EMS response problem we're covering in town. We already have about six, ten licensed members, will have more in six to eight months. Uh, the new airbags that we purchased through the Aqua Fund are in, they're going through a month of training and setup. Hopefully will be ready to go online first of September, and they'll be promoting a ready training captain this week. Go to walk in the last two weeks, had seventeen building permits. She's working on the minor home occupation ordinance as well, the application. Still have a couple areas in there, please. Uh, she's working on the finance option recovery fee, so you can set the, I don't know, public hearing for your review. She's working on public works director on some town violations, working on them. Uh, she addressed several violations, we have, one violation, we have a legal court case back. Under planning, been working on revision for the solar ray ordinance, uh, looking into the new state ordinance coming in twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. There's two new state ordinances on housing, uh, I don't remember the other ones. Coming in, and she's working to figure out how them are, narrow that in our current, current ordinance. Uh, Lanning Wood denied the change for his own request here on Main Street. Dan is gonna meet with the homeowner, roll over your potential next steps, see if he can help us in all the way. Library, the library, uh, Seco Science Center will be hosting this Monday at five P M. Be a live animal touch bin activities and crafts. End of the summer ice cream party is August thirteenth. Since this is the last week, the summer reading program, still waiting on more calls, so the, the letters are plugged up, and we're waiting on a call for the, for the plane, correct? Uh, it's been hard and proud to find somebody to give us calls to get the, the recreation, the A C units, now there's community center. The roof is finally holding up well and no leaks after many years. Summer camp's in after this week, they have twelve laundry floor kids, it was a great success. Thank you to Maura, and, and thank you for your hard work on that. Seventy five kids signed up for soccer camp, two hundred and twenty kids signed up to fall soccer. Maury is just in a slot desk, we're trying to do a previous job at school. Uh, that position will be being posted for a new program coordinator this week. The senior programs are planning a triple A point soccer, fall bowling, lunch, cruise. October third, and Del Yoga bowling sessions, going very well. And they're gonna do a, start up six week session, yeah. Town park, surprised at how many new vehicles people are buying, I mean, de-buying and de-registration, that helps us, yeah, that's excise tax for us. Um, Clark's office is very busy with marriage licenses, and all electric materials being put away, she's getting ready for a new election, it'll go, correct? And the all time park. Grand River Station, the race will be in effect once it's announced first. Uh, Dan and Jay Bo came to us with a concern, they noticed that a lot of contractors are dumping, going up, they're dumb, they're dumb. Uh, so we're getting a sign, and if that goes back to, uh, we'll have a later discussion, and a lot of time, stickers. That's a residential transfer field station, so when people do a contract job, contractor does a job to say renovate a kitchen or renovate a hall. Hopefully they put in debris removal costs and debris, get rid of that cost, they put that in the contract. Then they take it up to us and nothing for free. We're losing, because we gotta pay. Our transfer costs and transportation costs are forty six percent. So we're gonna make a sign that says, no partial dumping, this isn't what this is for. But that's on the side, from sides, and so you're like a dump. And we're gonna try to get the staff to pay more attention. They come in, these, a truck and a trailer, and, you know, John's renovations and, and house building, you know. What are you doing? That's, you know, that's not, so we gotta, we gotta figure something out, because people are beginning to recognize we're losing our facility. And like Dan said, when our dust is a little tall over two weeks, it's only a month or one day, right? But, but, you know, they're just coming in, and woes and woes and warts, well, Dan says it's just out of the way. I think people have thought of, we gotta figure out a way to get it off of this whole program then. Finance, uh, tax couple applications being accepted in process, hopefully I do.
This September tax bills will go to the printer tomorrow, now the number rate has been set. Uh, I am and my staff are still working on year end duties, covering facilitiations, and having more audit help of the.
So under admin, um, the management leadership team met with Mike Glassell today, his team. Uh, to continue the discussion on what we're going to do with our, either new medical building, or renovate this building or something. Uh, the next step in that is, uh, we're gonna do kind of a needs assessment of each department. And then I hope to have a workshop for you in September, so that we can start talking about ideas and processes, just ideas and processes, that's it. Remember, your ambulance, and in the meeting with the fire chief and the chief, we're all for chief, because it's highly the same contract, and it's definitely chief. Uh, myself, Jen, uh, we met with them on staffing, we're having. Hot item comes down to page, on the market, as everybody else is going crazy, so we're paying our paramedics twenty dollars while we can. Well, for our advertising, we'll pull time division of the third world, so if you're a paramedic, you're gonna go to Melverick, you're not gonna come apply to the organics. Unfortunately, what's happened is we're having staff overpriced here. So we give them a couple solutions to attempt to work on, um, and see if they could, and we help them, and at the same time, we've lost it to maybe become first responder agency. Because what's happened right now, there's no evidence available, they're still paid to fight about the bill, we're not licensed to do that. And that's a violation of state code, that gets us the bill, so if we can become licensed and basic well, then we can go and help out. Wait till your ambulance gets here, or any joint ambulance comes in, so that's where I have it, that's one of the solutions. Now, we're gonna do post, wishing that the old one, don't tell, the patient suicide, and our post, things here. Uh, our custodian, Jen here, has announced her retirement, conducting interviews, very replacement. Jen did, uh, watched a couple interviews today, and we'll make a decision on that. Uh, we found it important to go over the patent heads, what's the dual case of emergency? Incredible threat to a facility, to an employee, to a person, we had them last week, attractive employee, we put everybody on hydro floor. So as a reminder, one of the things we're gonna look at is, this building is a no form, weight or shape available block. Someone wants to come in here and commit harm, so we. Website moving along, we're at step four, step of eight steps, uh, Don's been working on that. Um, and I'd like to schedule a workshop on September twentieth to have a, to talk about town hall. And then the last thing I have, get the updates for the owl, uh, we contacted the owl company, uh. They told us to check the settings, check for if it was the latest updated. Very, very good, thank you. In the software, so it was not updated in the software, and then it spawned again, Amy and Don got in, checked the settings, we thought the setting, the setting. Uh, I got an email from a citizen who said it wasn't the echo, but it was a pack of voices, weren't clear enough. So we started checking, and there's, there's a setting for background noise, so we can turn that up. Totally eliminates hearing the air conditioner, is more prevalent to the, to the voices. The other thing is multiple people talking at once, so I'll say, there's a thing called double D, double D.
Say it was double talk.
Double talk, and turn that down.
So we had tried it at one setting, and it was just, two people were talking, you couldn't hear anything at all. And then we changed it, and it was easier to read, and listen to, if you just kind of pick one voice. But as long as we're careful not to talk over each other in this extreme.
So we're hoping that they, hopefully, we'll try, we'll go back and watch it tomorrow. That's all I have.
Can you pass on and thank you for the, the fire departments for pulling off these summer kitchens, they got off the stick of that. That was a huge change.
Oh, nice. What did they do, I'm excited. They just.
They're having a hose involved and some water. The kids enjoyed it a lot when they got off the.
They, uh, they were at Monwood's and playing the golf in the clocks with the water, but it's, yeah, really appreciate it, yeah. She asked a question about the EMS licensed members, so we currently have six that are licensed, and we are looking to license the entire.
No, so we have, we have, we're trying to get two bits, we have members who are licensed, but they're not licensed to practice in the software. So they can go, but, so they may be like, they may go full time by, by a paramedic's over. But he's, so his license is carried to go, so I mean, he can't really respond, he's not supposed to respond here, and provide medical, so how. Our license is carried through your handle. Maybe that would be an employee of your handles, or software provider, that's where licenses first responders. Then we can, their license may be carried on to our main, that they can go as a member of software provider, where they carry back.
So we can revert back to when we had the rescue squad here.
It's a very, it's a basic version of it, yes, unfortunately it is, but.
It's good, it's good, it's great.
Well, it, it, right now, it's an easy, quick, solvable solution, other than when the tunnel goes out, and they say, software providers stand by for page, because your handles then won't be on. And if you're having a heart attack, that's probably the scary thing for us, so. First, first of all, you're gonna get three or four, five of us gonna come, and they're gonna hold hands and say, John, I'm a paramedic, but I can't touch you, I can't help you, or if I can hold your hand and say, I'll stay with you till you die comfortably, because I don't care to license and software.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so we, the license is a good thing for us, it's a good thing for everybody now, that's right.
There is a, you know, small box on getting a license, and that'll hopefully just say, you get it and train. But I think the benefit of the value of, as opposed to, if they're licensed through us, we're carrying your license shortly. Then that paramedic control says, John, I can now start treating you, while we're waiting for the go-bragals to come, because your, they have staff.
Yeah, they're not, the benefits are always lost, so.
But unfortunately, you're absolutely a hundred percent right.
Okay, okay.
Thank you to the team for, I think, the owl.
Thank you to the team for, I think, the Owl, and I found that we are too updated behind. We'll see more of them on there, yeah. Any else? Do you want to schedule that workshop? What'd you say, September twentieth?
September.
So, work for everybody?
September twentieth.
Great, you picked a perfect day, because you had any other days to work? All right, I'm moving into unfinished business, I know, or I'm just, I'm, I'm gonna just want to, um, you all had a workshop last week, but I wasn't able to join a, a work thing. I think I checked into Tim afterward, and I think the takeaway was Tammy and Jenny were gonna kind of put their heads together, put some stuff together for us.
We did find new documents, and he doesn't have the zest, I'm gonna work on his project.
Whenever you talk about putting this on the agenda, discussing it the next week.
Right.
Right, we gave them an extra.
Yeah, so, so you wanted on, you wanted to come back on September, the first meeting, last meeting, you know.
Yeah, if they have, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I think, like, I don't wanna brush that, but I think, as soon as they have it, right? And so I think, given that, I think Barbara, we can actually kill these two agenda items, it's permanent ones. Yeah.
Thanks. On motion?
Yeah, we don't need that. So, we'll plan to take up these items after we get information from Jenny and Tammy, either the next meeting or the next, definitely. So, we'll move down to this for reading of our ballot questions, regarding Great Works Regional Land Trust, Sammametal's river project. Sort of write a little bit of context for anyone who's not been in our last few meetings. Great Works, written, Tim, please jump, like, why I mean, I think it's wrong, but. The Great Works Regional Land Trust is an opportunity to purchase a rather large chunk of land here in South Berwick, and. One is asking for a financial contribution from the town, and two is also asking if the town will be willing to own the land purchased as part of this project. We just set it as a council, in different kinds of previous meetings, and the consensus was that we wanted to put this vote to the town in our November ballot, and. I think we're right about it, at the time, in terms of needing to finalize language, so we can get that on the ballot and see what we think in November. So, and we did, we asked our town attorney, Phil Soxier, to draft, to help us draft the language for those two ballot items. And, so we have legal approval on the, and I'll just read them on real quick. So, I remember, I'm assuming this would be item number one and two, you have any other ballot items, Barbara, that will be on there from this town project? But no other, yeah. But number one, to see if the town will vote to appropriate two hundred fifty thousand dollars, and as a needed fund, this is the Great Works Regional Land Trust. Purchase seven one, purchase seventy-one acres of property on the Sammametal's River. Title waters located at map six, lots, lot fourteen, fourteen A, and twenty-nine A. Such property to be used for public uses, and the appropriation with such funds will not affect the current mill rate. That's question number one, question number two.
You wanna make that a motion? You guys have to go second, so I can move that to make it a motion, second, and then, second.
Sure.
One, or do that?
Yeah, yeah, let's do it, let's do it separate, yeah.
So, I'll move that as a motion.
Good motion to place the language on our November ballot, that's right. Good motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor of the proposed language going on our November twenty-two ballot, as far as for them, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any votes? Push press five zero. And the question number two, would we see if the town looks at the ownership of land purchased by the Great Works Regional Land Trust on Sammametal's River Title Waters, such property located at map six, lot fourteen, fourteen A, and twenty-nine A?
Make that motion up. So.
We have a motion in a second, is able to place the language, just write on our ballot and remember. Any discussion?
We've got.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Five zero, great.
If I made that a chair, yeah, we can move on to the next item, especially since Tim is here, the project manager, I just wanna make sure everyone's on the same page. That one's absentee balloting starts in this building thirty days before the election, there can be nothing about this in the building.
Okay.
And no shores, no windows, no mountain. I just wanna make sure everyone's clear on that.
Just like the election, right?
Exactly.
Nothing around the road.
Nothing that could influence a voter's decision.
So, we will have, in the, in the town halls, and we'll have the specific questions posted.
Yes.
All right, any else? Okay, all right, we can move on to new business number two, we had to prepare number one. Renewal of the Owl Golf Club liquor license and special.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the renewal of the links and Owl Golf Club liquor. Liquor license and special, we can permanently, in case you should go standing, there's been no reports from any local. Second.
Motion in a second, any special? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Five zero. It was number three. It was December three, setting a public hearing date for chapters sixty, building construction permanent. Tim, sorry, just to refresh my memory, this was something we brought up, like, we brought up at our last meeting, but it was, it involves changing our ordinance, which you probably heard.
Great, it's reported, it's set in the break. Permanent D and so forth, so on, so because of the diversity orders, attached orders, and that's where we're probably. But I would recommend that you next meeting or the first meeting in September, you yourself, you know, the public, public here.
Form. Have to be, be advanced. You know, industry.
Yes, once it's posted, this must be available to the public.
And so, we're.
And you're supporting them.
All right, I. I don't suggest that we take this up at, on September. But first, public hearing then.
Yeah, yeah, Chair, we'll go public hearing on September thirteenth, which is a Tuesday, I hope.
Yes.
Receive a comment on proposed decree to build permanent.
At six thirty.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor of motion of public hearing for chapters sixty, building construction, permanent use on September fifteenth, that's really, yeah, aye. Aye. Any votes? Five zero. Number four, Liberty Street, beautiful weight limits. So, to set the context here, we received a addition from several residents on Liberty Street regarding the weight limits for. Detective trucks, heavy trucking, trucking, I guess, on. Liberty Street, is it just Liberty Street?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Well, this was given to me when I first got here, this apparently was given to Barry, Barry, apparently didn't stress it. You just put in speed bumps, I was trying to wait and see if the speed bumps would have an impact. I haven't had, I've only had one person contact me on this. George. I had feedback, I've got, if I'm winning the street, the speed bumps are working. I've driven up and down it three or four times now, I've seen people walking on the Liberty Street now. They said they walk the walks, it has slower traffic, it has that kind of effect. I don't know of trucks, so, I told them I would put that in front of you, but this, I talked to Clark, this would have to also be a change to the limits, correct, of it?
Yes.
You'd have to do the same thing, you'd have to make a change, you'd have to hold public hearing, set up a public hearing, and then you'd have to do that change, that. Or we did put up signs.
Yeah.
So.
I was, what, what were you gonna do?
Don, don't, don't, say that.
Okay, I know, I think there's some folks here that are probably not here to speak about this, but, right, if anybody wants to give a bad anything.
Well, it, it was my.
Yeah.
And, like, everybody on Liberty Street signed it, as well as, and that, on fine street, that turns out to two thirty-six. You know, these entire vehicles.
Yeah. And can I ask, have you noticed a difference with the speed bus that are up there?
The traffic is much slower, it's, I think, we've made the speed bump so much that you're avoiding it.
But from a trucking standpoint, to.
I haven't, I know that one other person, the trucks are still losing, yeah. I'm really, really wrong with my. I haven't seen any jack drivers come through, I haven't tried that. From my own perspective, I think this would be more proactive, I heard there's an economic slump right now, there's not, there's not the building construction going on, or, and that picks up, that is, ah, with us.
I, I just, I think we need to be careful. For the weight limits on more roads in town. More study, before we go there, the speed bumps were, again, careful, there have been bumps on every road in this town, nobody likes speed, right? Over sand, and I know, I know that I have people that'll speak to this, but that, well, I got logging trucks, I got big trucks, I'll live on, I got two active pits. I got a couple of businesses, I don't like them either, unfortunately, it's nature of the beast, where I live is where I do. I can't see any eighteen where track and trailer got a longer ride down Liberty Street on the by, and they, if they do, they're lost.
I can tell you, what you're gonna express is the biggest offender of that.
Wow.
Yeah, they come through with those really long trailers, and they have gone halfway up Liberty Street, halfway up the hill, and thought this was a bad idea, and they backed all the way down. And they've also done that, they've come onto Liberty and thought Pleasant Street was a better idea, they've gone up Pleasant Street. And this is happening like at midnight, they're not avoiding traffic, they're taking a shortcut. It happened in, at Sunday morning, you know, when there's no traffic in town. And, and that's the kind of stuff, we have, his own concrete trucks come down, roaring down the hill, and he thinks they better come through by pitching in the morning.
I just, I, I just think we should just, see how those speed bumps do, my, my personal opinion, I just don't wanna jump the cycle. Putting too many more roads, I mean, if you look at all those roads, there isn't much right around there. Something's on two thirty-six, there's gotta be a way off from thirty-six.
Right, so if it was posted, there was, he, he dressed in one thirty-six years.
Posted, it's posted, you can't use. I don't think you can say it's posted, it misses the word, so if we post it, you have to post it. And I, I guess, I guess, one opinion. I think it's awesome, I can't remember where I had the conversation, but I had the conversation, oh, with someone, they're talking about. GPS being really the main culprit of some sort of things, I know for a reason, but I, the thing that pops in my mind is, when I keep to go over there, I'm thinking, I don't wanna hit the intersection, and I'm thinking, I can get over here slowly. But I can keep myself moving, and I wonder, as technology is, we're all using GPS now, are these truck drivers just using their GPS? And is there, I have no idea, this is just a question out there in the world. Is there something that we, or, that we need to be doing to mark that this is on GPS, so it pops up, I don't even know if that's an option?
Well, first off, truck drivers aren't supposed to be using GPS for cars, they're supposed to have.
That's right.
Yeah, a special GPS that keeps them on, shows they're supposed to be on, you know, because otherwise, they can drive them across post bridges and under the wall, and crash each car, so this stuff.
Right, right, but I, I, I agree, I, I agree with John, I see the problem, I, and I understand, and I hear that, I think that, because I, it's fun, part of my Sunday, Saturday and Sunday routines to go to the transfer station. Because I need a, a smile from people there, and then I cruise around the town and see all the different things that are happening, and.
Oh, yeah, I follow everybody, I think, I mean.
But I think the speed bumps are, were definitely a change to that road, and.
It's cut down a lot on the car traffic, because it's an experiment, before the speed bumps been in, I sat out on my front lawn for an hour in the middle afternoon, not before, before the baby yard traffic rush comes through. I counted a hundred and fourteen cars coming down the street in an hour, most of them turning to the rear shed. So, that's cut down on that a lot, but the trucks are still using.
Right, when I, when I read that, and there, I was flattered, asking about getting out here and having, through the charts that they're saying, and I realized Madison was in it, so.
Yeah, and backing all the way down that hill.
Waiting for the street was easier. My, my take on this, I think it's like, I mean, when did you all pull this together?
I did, um, I.
A while ago.
Yeah, when the other town manager was here.
Yeah, okay.
And. He moved to put the council, and it just kind of went nowhere.
I guess, I guess my take on it is, I think, you know. We just put in the speed bumps, and it felt like we had a big interest in traffic protection, I guess, like, let's keep an eye on it, like, keep, keep us posted if you're still feeling like there's tons of big trucks coming through, especially if you ever have a meet and act event, that's, that picks up. And let us know from your operations, we, we can take it up again.
Well, I'm just a dear, too, that with the con, the conversations and the information that is coming from this area of town to town, to Tim, is getting worse, so this is not, we are seeing. We're seeing the escalation, we're hearing it, so, don't, I don't want, I agree with Valerie with that statement, but I don't want you to leave here thinking, it's just that same thing that I got here, we're not saying that, we're saying we're listening, we wanna, we wanna watch.
Right, right.
We recognize the changes happening.
Yeah, that same year, that I sat out on my front lawn for an hour, one of those vehicles coming through was a triaxle dump truck hauling a black bed trailer. Yeah, and then twenty minutes later, followed by another one, turning to the rear shed.
I feel, I feel like, really, keeping our, our finger on it also, especially with the changes that are happening, but, yeah, a good move.
Thank you for going into my owl. Number five, over by the community, actually, right, just a minute. Right. All right, I'm sharing my screen, we're gonna present this, I am going to chit chat about the. But, sure. The Community Resilience Partnership with the Governor's Office of Policy and Future. This partnership is the key implementation of the December twenty twenty Mainwell Way Action Plan by the Maine Climate Council. Was produced with, like, input from two hundred people, and this partnership is kind of getting municipalities on board with thinking about climate change. So, why should self-work participate in partnership? Tackling climate change is not easy, and the Community Resilience Partnership participation means that we don't have to. What would it provide to us? It would structure some early municipal conversations about climate change, to capture near-term projects, and to highlight some low-earning groups. It would provide self-work access to some community action grants through the state. It would assign multi-term, multi-year term regional coordinators to us to help develop future project ideas, and to provide help with researching and applying for grants, especially federal grants. It would also provide us some networking opportunities, both regionally and statewide, through training sessions, those who buy regional coordinators, so it would put us chatting with likewise communities who may have similar situations to our own. What was the involvement process look like? The Community Resilience Partnership debuted late in twenty twenty-one, we chatted about a brief. The Community Resilience Partnership debuted, uh, late in twenty twenty-one, we chatted about it briefly in December of twenty twenty, and March of twenty twenty-one, uh, twenty twenty-two, there were twenty-four grants that were approved through this process. So, um, the enrollment process in the partnership looks like self-work being to pass a municipal resolution, admitting to participate, and there's some draft language. Will need to complete two self-assessments, one is a list of seventy-two community actions, and the other one is a community resilient self-evaluation. These do not have to be, the, the manner of which we complete these does not change our participation in grant. So we do not need professional help in order to do this, this is simply going through, looking at what we have at hand, and saying yes or no. Um, then we would hold a, a community workshop to set some priority actions for the community. Um, during this workshop process, we want to make sure that we have a really diverse group in front of us, so that we get a variety of viewpoints, and that we keep, um, the projects that we move forward in as, within the entire community, not just specific groups. And then obviously you need to submit the enrollment materials to the community. There are some service provider grants, which we chatted about earlier, um, but I think that this is, we are at a point where we may be able to move forward without leaving consultants, to not listen to the process. Let's just take a look at that list of seventy-two, list of community actions, I've taken a few screenshots at things that interested me. This is not what we should do, this is just looking for impact and feedback. But strategy one, install EV chargers in public parking areas, and also adopt ornaments to encourage EV charging infrastructure, including at multifamily dwellings, businesses in public parking areas. While there's some money there, there's also things that, that are not involving money, like setting some ornaments. Another, I wouldn't be just if I didn't talk about the internet, so adopting a broadband plan that reduces the need to drive and increases the, um, the efficiency of telecommunication, so thinking about our internet connectivity. Struggling in public health, you know, developing and implementing the extreme temperature emergency plan, including strategies that increase the use of cooling centers by residents. Establish a peer-to-peer program for checking in on vulnerable community members during extreme heat or cold events. It's self-work, we care about our neighbors, I don't think that costs a lot of money, it just, you, you just need somebody to say this is important and for all those types of things. And that's what I really like about this list of community actions, it just gives us the, a framework to, to which we can look at things and say this is important to us or not. So we can support clean energy jobs businesses, you know, I've, I've grilled them, so that is joining us on September twelfth. Um, but look at encourage and support clean energy industries and economic development plans. Interesting things. And then finally, why I'm bringing this to this agenda tonight is modernize mains buildings. So as we transition to cleaner heating and cooling, uh, and energy efficiency in municipal buildings. We are sitting in our town hall, it's, you know, that is center on a rock, we get very bones to the building, we have everything that it heard, but we need to tickle better systems and understand what we're going through. So there's a bunch of action on this list that we could consider moving forward. So there are community action grants, which are fifty thousand dollars per community, um, that are available to communities twice a year. So the intended grant outcomes are to reduce commissions and to improve community resilience. There's one option, one is a no-match grant, it's for one of those activities that I highlighted on the previous page, but there are seventy-two community actions. Um, using a no-match, and, um, the last time, there were twenty-four communities that funded, that submitted the first round in March, and, there'll be money that's available to us. Option two is for programs and, um, self-identified climate priorities that do not fall on that list. So these may be larger projects, and this option number two would require a twenty percent in this whole match. There is an open grant right, right, right now, which expires September twentieth. Total funds available for this round is one point three million dollars, and all materials, including any of the, uh, enrollment process can be submitted. The grant applications need to define the project deliverables, budget and timeline, it also needs to provide some metrics for both the success of the project and the progress towards long-term community goals. Any awarded grants need to provide quarterly updates and a final case study on lessons learned. And equity inclusion is a, is a key or strong grant application. The workshop that is held is part of the enrollment process, again, should include a diverse audience, so that everybody has a say. Um, grants are scored out of, it's possible, but scales were of one hundred, and award notifications for this round will be put out in October, mid-October or end of November. Now, initially, you know, I kind of was thinking about Denise coming on board and whether or not she would have capacity for this, but I think it's might be compressed. But I think that we should start taking steps to consider this as close towards twenty twenty-three for this grant. So the current grant, and so for twenty, it would be, if, like, I look back at your enrollment, like, we did, we scheduled boxes before the twentieth, and they're running. Correct. Right. And so when is the next, what the case? Would be in the March, probably in March, it's spring, twenty twenty-three. If we are looking for funding to assist with some sort of renovations, or boilers, or windows, or things like that, for this building, where we are seated, this, this is an option that's presenting itself to us. I, I, I absolutely don't know. I think where we just scheduled a workshop on the twentieth. So, we're towards the deadline, but to talk about town hall, right? Uh, so I think that this is a piece of that conversation for sure, like, for us to consider for future. I think it's certainly too, too, too tight for the twentieth, uh, but, um, I think, so it's a good thing to consider, and, you know, I think Denise is kind of a grant pro, you know, um, and something we could actually, that's part of our town hall discussion, whatever that would be. That, that's why I think.
Move for the evening.
I do.
Your questions. Can you hook up to the power? I can hardly notice something coming out of the room.
Not in this area, I mean, we started at my house.
So it was one for Connecticut, and I have the calls, and I couldn't figure out how we got that Tesla by the phone.
North, north of, like, York County, yes, is the problem, I miss that area.
Four hours from the York County, it was a Tesla, Connecticut place, sitting at the gas station, that was. All the way when I looked down, going, how did you get here?
I think, I think in order for there to be, by personal, there needs to be, if there's going to be more adoption of electric vehicles, there needs to be availability to charge on just like gas stations, so I think, I mean, and, and again, me as one person, I think, moving in a direction, if we could start to have more of that in town, I think that brings, I think, it's just a direction, that's, I think, maybe, I would accommodate more of that. Um, but as a EV driver, I don't personally deal with it. If we want to support our downtown businesses, it hides the level three charging facility for EV stations, means that we have to plug in for half an hour. We open a coffee, load a newspaper, and then come back to their car. So a level two is not strong enough to charge, if it's your, if your residential use is probably what we have to have here. But that level three would, would mean we're on a map, and people are going to come to us and say, look, there's a little bit. So that's, that's true, that's a real thing, like, you said, charge, and you go, go get your money, you go for a walk, you go start running while you're waiting, you know?
So we need sort of people next door, and they put what right in their hotel park, and we give them access. We advertise that for the town, and they pay more.
I was just gonna say, good case for that.
It's lunch.
Most are metered, right, like, level three, you're not, we're not paying for the electricity, and there are grant, there's grant money out there, like, the process to install it. And wherever we put one may determine what the town feels like in the next fifteen, twenty years, maybe, like, you know, the gas, the gas station of today, they look different in the future. I, I missed it, I think you said that there's like the twenty twenty-three, so, but is this like an ongoing, like, every year thing? Like, I love the, like, this, you know? The, um, the coordinators are on multi-years, I think they're on a three-year contract, okay, so everything's funded here. So, putting it clear. But I think from, from an action standpoint, I think, let's for sure consider this, since we talk about town hall, and I think that even in the back of our heads, we're thinking about that number of legislation, and all of that stuff.
My prediction, once I get these, there are certain, they're graphic, it's hard out.
She probably already knows that, right? Probably does, or he knows that too. Saco actually won a grant.
Yeah, so, I'm sure she does, but I would say at that point, we'll get her connected to this. You know, that, out of her titles, economic, 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 community, um, development, so she, she's not just in this, she's got to be all community development too, so, let's send some of that more, 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 to that, we see. Probably, I would just say, you know, if you're a champion, it's people.
Yeah.
Thanks for pulling that together.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
It was good to know.
All right, um, council member comments?
I've said more than that tonight, I'm good.
Well, done.
Um, I think it's important to give us a date, uh, so the public is aware of what kind of seat in reelection on November eighth. So, uh, just wanted folks to know, because, Bob, what's the deadline for, uh, final papers?
Thursday, September eighth.
And so, it's a month out, and I just wanted to let folks know that there's a, as far as I'm concerned, my seat total.
Uh, just a quick community comprehensive plan update, uh, we have four hundred and thirty-four responses so far to our online survey, and the surveys left the printer on Monday, so they should be hitting boxes that are vetted this week, probably USPS. Um, I did meet with Elliot's select person, Lauren Dow, at a community event, and, you know, she welcomed, um, in terms of networking, or perhaps similar things, that we could tackle them, that's possibly an important discussion here.
Just a little bunch of things, some things that I've been talking with before, and, and going down to the transfer station, there's Dan. I don't think I've ever seen any of them, just like, rumpy or anything, and it's really great, especially with the, um, cars and traffic that's just, they're, they're just great to be around, and, and show off, and it's, I don't know, it's, it's just nice to mention, and I appreciate, I appreciate what they do. Also, uh, again, another thing, went down to Public Works, um, for a different thing today, and got a little tour of the, the new garage, and they're all psyched about, they're excited about what's happening, and it's exciting to see the excitement. And, um, as well as the, the new equipment that, that they've gotten, so, um, and also, they had mentioned Nick down there, and Jay, Ray Marker, and both mentioned, you know, come on down to the winter time, we prefer a ride in the flat track. I know, so, want to pass that on. Uh, again, and also with Owl, um, I know I've had personal conversations with people in town, um, with the jumbled jar called in which, and I thank the public for working with us, and we're kind of understanding the new space more than, um, and appreciate you guys for looking at that, figuring that out. And then, uh, and then your fest is tomorrow, so, uh, hopefully, uh, the weather is, the temperature's more like it was when we came in here tonight, crap that.
Not ready.
Yeah, so, um, exciting stuff, so, thank you.
Thank you. Um, the only thing I have is just a little bit of a reminder, I guess, not only to the council, but probably more to the public, that, um, Facebook is not a, a vehicle for us to conduct, conduct any town business at all. Um, and, you know, if, if members of the public are tagging specific counselors and posts, um, they cannot conduct any type of town business. Uh, Facebook, um, that is sort of acting as a body, um, as, as an individual instead of a body, and so, I just encourage the council, as well as the public, to just kind of remember that, and there's other ways to get in touch with us, these meetings are great, we have email or phone numbers. Um, but Facebook, I know it's a very active place, we've got a lot to say on there, but it is not an approved town place of business, I guess, that's my, that's my.
I was just wondering, my board, the council, even though you are in the middle, that's the way I'm hearing them speak, but people in the world, you see the usual transfer station, you know Jeff Maninhead? Jeff Maninhead, we're town council, you're recognized, same with you, and same with you, and when you speak, people, you know, remember the old line, where you say, oh, no, knock yourself out, and, you know, the line on the floor, no, I didn't mean that. But when you speak, sometimes people take that you're speaking from town council, it's a big part of it where people see those councils, public officials, not just citizens. Here, why don't you evade it into that? Some of you know, why don't you evade it into that conversation? Let me see if I can say something.
You can say no, and get roasted. You can say, no, it's not needed, where you should be asking these questions, this is not the forum, and you can get sixty-three comments after this. Trust me, but you know, you can take care of that too.
That's right. That's right.
Yeah.
Uh, so one last thing for the council, uh, we did the award thing, uh, the awards picnic, that went great, I'm very, very happy. We missed some pins, we didn't get an Alton won Gummy Awards, uh, we missed some, some of the employees, and they all got handed out, I always very appreciative, by the council. We have some here that I'm gonna hand out. Uh, first one is for John James, I think this is your ninth year of council, seven, seven, seven years, so, John, you'll get a five-year Gummy then. Congratulations. Madam Chair, I take it to your bench here?
Yes.
So congratulations to you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, certainly remarkable one, and I don't think anybody knows, and Jack Brapp is over thirty years of municipal service, thank you, Jack. On behalf of the employees and citizens, we thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's nice.
All right, so, done?
Oh, yes, Madam Chair, I hope you're sure.
I was a favor of yours, I, um, because.
So wait there. Tonight is nine o'clock. You're a little. We're getting more, we are thinking, trying to get this. And I think, and it's good, it's old. I didn't mean to say, and that's a bit.
It says recording on here.